I'm going to call to order the meeting for the City Council of the City of Pacifica for July 28, 2014. And roll call.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Stone is excused. Councilmember DeGree?
Present.
Mayor Protem Irvin?
Present.
Mayor Nyheart?
Present. And our salute to the flag will be led by Councilwoman Sue DeGree.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do we have a closed session report?
No reportable action.
And that brings us to the consent calendar. And I actually have a card for the consent calendar. First of all, before we get to that, are there any issues from council about the consent calendar?
No.
Okay. I have one card, and that is Bill Glasgow.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, fellow council members, city staff, and fellow citizens. I am Bill Glasgow, a member of the Pacifica Police Officers Association. I am here to speak briefly to you about item number nine on the consent calendar. I ask you to support staff's recommendations regarding our memorandum of understanding for January 1, 2014 through December 31, 2014. Association have worked very hard to come to this agreement. Negotiations for the past five years have been very challenging, but with this contract, the city is taking drastic steps in combating the ongoing recruitment and retention issues facing us. Although plenty more needs to be addressed, we are very pleased with the professionalism of the city's negotiator, Mr. Glenn Burkheimer, and interim Human Resource Director Heather Quinn. You talk about throwing someone in the fire. She held herself wonderfully. These two individuals really listened to what we had to say at the bargaining table, and we truly believe those comments were passed on to you, members of council. In closing, our association is very eager to get back to the bargaining table very soon so we can negotiate a successor long-term agreement. Thank you for your time.
Do you have a question? I mean, we're not -- or do we have a?
I just had a question for the city manager. Regarding item number seven and the utility vehicles, are we using the vehicle replacement fund for those?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Is there any way to kind of like get a balance of like what is in that fund after this?
Absolutely.
And in the future, kind of when we spend money, we know where it's coming from and what the balance is in that account?
Sure.
Just so we keep track of things? Okay.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Now, you can make a motion if you would.
I'm sorry. I was just going to make a comment.
Oh.
Okay. Councilwoman DeGree?
I just want to thank you, Officer Glasgow, for letting us know this. I really appreciate that.
Okay. I was just going to comment that we had been noting the funds always in the agenda, and they are there. I just wanted to clarify. So you're asking to add the amount?
Um, yeah. I mean, just given the past history, I think that'd be good for the public and us.
Yeah.
And I know we did start doing that with the school board sometimes, too.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
I understood that to be the fund balance every time we bring you back a report that adjusts that. Yeah. My -- sorry. I'll get a little bit closer.
We have to get.
I understood it to be a request to add the fund balance in future reports.
Okay.
Happy to do that.
And Mayor Protem?
I'm just going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councilwoman DeGree?
Zekka.
Okay. Please vote. And that passes for with one person absent. So that brings us to a very special presentation. And? Huh?
Did we do the whole consent calendar?
Yeah. That brings us to a very special presentation, and I'd like -- oh, there you guys. We have the honor of recognizing a couple of our officers tonight. And Chief, I'm going to read this so the public knows what we're giving them, but I want you to then present the recognition, the certificates. Okay. So this is both for Matthew Smith and Lori Pineda. Did I pronounce that right? Okay. And whereas on May 5, 2014, at approximately 11:04 PM, a 911 call was received from 1087 Park Pacifica reporting a male patient at the residence who was not breathing and may be deceased. You were unseen within one minute of the call for assistance. Whereas upon arrival at the residence, you located the patient and began life-saving measures, you were joined shortly by Lori Pineda. And Lori, yours is modified to talk about you, but I think one of them will probably give the audience an idea of what happened that night. And together continued life-saving efforts, which include the performance of cardiopulmonary resuscitation. You were able to deploy the automatic external defibrillator from your patrol vehicle as an advanced life-saving measure. Whereas through the use of CPR and the defibrillator, you and the RN Pineda assisted in restoring the heartbeat and breathing of the patient. The patient was transported to a local hospital and with a heartbeat and able to breathe on his own. Whereas North County Fire Authority Captain Joseph Penko described your efforts and the deployment of the defibrillator in such a quick period of time as a life-saving effort, Captain Penko further confirmed this belief with responding paramedics who agreed that the deployment of their defibrillator and the efforts of you and RN -- I should just say nurse because I'm 1-2, Pineda, were life-saving. Whereas the patient assigned passed away nine days later as a result of complications arising from medical condition, we recognize that many of us have lost loved ones suddenly and unexpectedly, and in each of these cases, loved ones are commonly heard to state, "I wish I had one more day to tell them I love them." In this case, the life-saving measures performed by you and Nurse Pineda made it possible for this family to have an additional nine precious days to express their love to this patient. Whereas the call to save the life of a fellow human being comes with great responsibility and the need for excellent performance under stressful conditions, your response to this scene was conducted with skill and professionalism. I wish to commend you for your performance and for your ability to make a difference in the remainder of life for this patient and his family. And that is both to you, Officer Matt Smith, Matthew Smith, and also our Nurse Lori Pineda. Your efforts are duly recognized by us and gratefully received. And I can just tell you, and for the audience, it's so rare to really resuscitate somebody in the field, that obviously this person was incredibly ill, but you performed heroic efforts, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Chief Tassa, would you like this?
Yeah, just one second. On behalf of the police department and myself, I want to recognize both Officer Smith and Mrs. Pineda on a truly rewarding experience for themselves, I hope. I don't think there is anything more rewarding than being able to save the life of another, whether it's from a medical profession or from a law enforcement profession. They obviously, in their business environments, deal with a multiple of a variety of events, and in dealing with a life-saving event and being able to actually save somebody, as you mentioned earlier, doesn't happen that often. I think the quick response, them being able to maintain their composure, and the availability of the AED played an instrumental part in being able to save this individual's life, though it was only for nine days. It was a precious nine days for the family, I'm sure. So on behalf of the department, I'd like to thank both of them. We have a life-saving medal that we'd like to present to Officer Smith.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Another hand.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Pineda?
Might have been a ride along.
Because we usually do. We're a talkative group, so just hang out up here. Okay. Thank you.
Karen?
I just want to thank you both for being as exceptional as you are at what you do. It just is so gratifying, and I'm so proud to have you as part of Pacifica, and just incredible work that you did, and it meant so much to the family, I guarantee you. Thank you.
And thank you much for joining your professions because both of them can be hazardous at any moment, so I really appreciate your dedication and caring.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Neil?
I just wanted to say thank you because I know it's tough when you're under the gun, so to speak, and have to make the real quick decisions, that you made the right one and did what you were trained and know what to do, so just wanted to say thank you also.
Thank you.
I just have one last comment. The AEDs that we have in the vehicles and at the police station were purchased a handful of years ago, and actually Captain Dan Stidle was instrumental in getting those for us. And that came through the Rotary, so I'd really like to recognize the Rotary also for funding those AEDs for us, so I think that's.
Did you happen to tell the Rotary that? They'd appreciate it.
We can do.
Absolutely. Thank you. Got to wait on Jane. Okay. Thank you. So that brings us to our public hearing tonight. And this public hearing is to consider proposed resolution of the City Council of the City of Pacifica accepting the report of sewer service charges for fiscal year 2014 to 2015 and directing the filing of those charges for collection by the county controller. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Dave Graham, Director of Wastewater. I have here with me Joshua Cosgrove, who is going to present the staff report tonight.
Thank you very much, Mayor Nyheart, City Council. Tonight before you, we have the sewer service charges for fiscal year 2014-15 that have been calculated in accordance with the appropriate city ordinance, number 606-C-S. A notice of public hearing was set for July 28, 2014, and it was published in the Pacifica Tribune of July 23, 2014. A copy of the computer printout has been kept in the Finance Department at City Hall for public inspection and verification. This hearing has been scheduled to hear any protests from property owners as to charges on any specific parcels. So the 2.9% sewer service charge rate increase before you tonight is part of the five-year rate structure, which was approved through the Prop 218 process by the City Council in 2012. So this action, for clarification purposes, this action is to put the sewer rate charge on the county tax rolls. The rate itself was already approved back in 2012. The five-year rate structure runs until 2017, and the annual rate was determined by staff using the Wastewater Department's operations and capital requirements, which was derived from our 20-year master plan and our 20-year financial plan. And I want to point out also that we, staff, is going to review and present our 20-year financial plan for the Wastewater Department at the August 11 City Council meeting. The sewer service charge rate sheet has also been included with this staff report, so you can see the annual rate increases previous to this and for the next couple of fiscal years. And it looks -- it looks like that. So if you have any questions, you can ask me any questions on that as well. As has been done in the past, staff recommends that we direct the county controller to assess these sewer service charges on the county tax rolls. In accordance with Prop 218, sewer standby charges can no longer be assessed. This action will yield total Sewer Fund 18 revenue of $13,658,700, as shown in the 2014-15 budget. Thank you. That's my presentation, and I and we are happy to answer any questions that you may
Just a point of clarification. We had a number of comments from the public, letters and various things. I'm sure other council members got them. People were thinking that we were somehow doing something, some action we were taking tonight. What I'm hearing from you very clearly, that we did that beginning 2012-13, and that's when Prop 218 occurred, that's when we had what we see in front of us, and that those rate increases have all been approved previously. Is that correct?
Yes, that is.
And there's no deviation from that?
No, not at all, none. This is following exactly what was approved by council in 2012.
So the deviation would actually institute another Prop 218? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes. So I wanted to make sure we're all playing with the same information. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Irvin, or Mayor Protem?
Thank you for your report. So you said that you're going to give a more in-depth report in August pertaining to, you know, what factors go into the revenue needed. But I was wondering if you could just basically kind of talk about what are the factors that determine what our revenue needs are?
The revenue requirements are really based on our operational requirements, so what it takes to operate and maintain the wastewater treatment plant and the collection system, and then also the capital requirements we have to upgrade and replace parts of our system. So we developed a master plan in 2012, and that really set in place for us the capital requirements that we have, so the projects we need to accomplish over the next 20 years. And then the operational requirements is simply what we look at on an annual basis as far as salaries of the operators of the treatment facility and of the collection system, and vehicle maintenance, things of that nature. But all of it comes really, comes from the master plan. That's kind of what drives the rates going forward. We have a lot of capital requirements, a lot of projects that need to be done, a lot of upgrades to our sewer system, and that's what's driving a lot of the rate increases you see.
And I had one more question. Because the revenue or the rate has to do with the amount of revenue divided by our flow rate, there is a chance that if flow rates are modified, that we'll need more -- people may have a higher rate overall. They may, if they reduce their water consumption, their rates will go down. But if everybody reduces their water consumption, then the rates of the sewer will go up. So is that accurate? Or are you concerned about the fact that rates can fluctuate based on water usage?
Yeah, you're exactly correct. The sewer rate is based on flow usage, so water consumption, the water that's used by the households in Pacifica, the businesses and households in Pacifica. So as they conserve water, which they, many are doing right now because we're in a drought, that does affect the flow coming into the wastewater treatment plant and does decrease the revenue from sewer rates. So that is something that we do have to watch. That is something we have seen. Director Dave Graham has been the plant manager for quite a long time, and he can tell you how he's steadily seen the water, the flow rate coming into the treatment facility lessen significantly over the last few years. And so that does make it difficult to do something like a five-year rate structure. And so that is definitely a risk that we're facing and pretty much most wastewater agencies are facing as well.
And if there was a future, we've already indicated what the rate increases are going to be for the next five years. If there was a need for a rate increase, what would be, or a rate decrease, what is the policy? If you can comment on that, what -- we have to go to the people again, I'm assuming, if there's a rate increase.
Yes. Any deviation from the five-year rate structure put in place in 2012 would require us, you to go through the Prop 218 process again.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Thank you, Joshua, for coming, but I wanted to ask is, in August, you're going to be coming to us with the 20-year plan, and I was wondering if you can try to -- usually we just get rows and rows and rows and another row of numbers. And I was wondering if you can try to, you know, keep it really simple, clear for people, like how much is in that fund balance, how much we're going to need for the replacement, are we above or below what is needed for that replacement? And, you know, if it's five years away and we're at 40%, you know what I mean, type of thing? So I just wanted to urge you to try to make it as simple as you can versus a counties type of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I will do my best to make it very simple.
Okay. Questions, because we still have to do the public hearing. Councilwoman DeGree?
I believe the pipes, too, the Orange Pipe, affect this as well. Is that correct?
The Orange?
For upgrading?
Orangeburg Pipe you're talking about? Hmm? 100% of the Orangeburg Pipe in Pacifica is owned by the property owner. It's just the building sewer running to the public sewer main. So that issue is something that's really is on the property owner in Pacifica, not the city. But because there's still a lot of Orangeburg Pipe in the ground, it's leaking, what we deal with as far as the public sewer main is the increase in flow when we have rain. We see a sizable increase in the flow that comes in because of those leaking pipes. So that's where we end up having to deal with that issue.
Thank you.
And if I recall, that magnitude is something like three to four million gallons a day up to, gosh, we were at 20, 25 in one really particular bad time. Is that right?
Oh, yes. Yes. We will see what's called peaking factors of three, four, sometimes five times normal dry weather flow.
Just one last question for the audience, as much as just in terms of what ends up on your property taxes, is that a tax or a rate?
Well, I understand it to be a fee.
That's right.
And not an actual tax. And I'm happy someone else would like to maybe provide more detail than I can.
And do one of you want to explain how that's -- I don't want to put you on the spot since you're on the Water District Board, too, but that's, there's a role here that is synergistic. So could one of you just explain how it's calculated?
How the rates are calculated?
Well, how, yeah, how what is charged, each individual customer is calculated.
It's based on their water usage, and we take the two wettest months of the year or attempt to, and we use those because we're hoping that most people have their irrigation off. And then we take those, and then we can average that out through the year and set the rate for the homeowner.
And we decide what the wettest months are based on?
Go ahead. What I was going to, why I leaned forward is just, and this is not intuitive, is that we look back to figure out the wettest months, and we use that for the future rates.
That's right.
And that's a step that sometimes is not easy to understand, but go ahead, Dave, in terms of answering that question.
We do plan to change that mechanism for next year because the problem is that we get our data from North Coast County Water District. They read meters every, they read half the customers one month and the other half the other month. So the customers are not on the same billing cycle.
Two-month period.
So there's a difference. So when, we have to pick two months in their billing cycle. So some people are going to get a certain two months, and the other people will get one month off. And so it's not really fair that way. And so we came up with a new mechanism, but we weren't in time to do the Prop 218 requirements.
Okay. To change it. So we'll probably be going through that next year. Is that correct?
Yes.
One last question for comment. I did a little poking around on other city websites and places looking at how these fees are billed to the customer. Because you're a business, you're a separate business, separate from us, and you, we just happen to be run by the city, but it's billed to the customer, and just, and a lot of them, I found them on their water, the water bill and the sewer bill were together. Any thoughts about that?
That's the most common way for wastewater billing to be done is on the water bill, and so that's one of the things that we are going to pursue for next year.
You have to get right up in it or talk louder.
We're going to pursue working with the Water District so that they will do the billing for us instead of having the rate put on the county property tax roll.
Okay. Thank you so much. So what I'm going to do now, any other comment, questions from council, is open the public hearing, and I have one card at this point in time on the public hearing, and that's Teresa Dyer. Anyone else, please put in a card.
Teresa Dyer, 1401 Cresby Drive. And yes, I do disagree with a lot of the comments that were made today because when you look at your property bill, it is part of your property taxes. It's not separate, it's not a separate fee. And I think you need to relook at this whole thing on how we're determining these fees since we've been in a drought. We'll probably continue to be in a drought, and I don't see how you can set fees for the next five years when we don't know what the weather's like. And for me, for myself, I've been really conserving water, and my son moved out and everything else, and my bill went up this month more than last month. So then I went to the Water Board hearing and got some information and looked at several people that had leaks. Now, I don't know if those are the same leaks that Mr. Cosgrove was talking about or not. That might be another whole thing. But how do we determine then what pipes are leaking and how are the people going to be, you know, based on the fees as to, you know, to the leaking of the pipes or whatever? I don't know. We're talking about several different issues, and one is the unilateral sewer, and one is also the fees here. But this has always been a sore subject with me ever since 2008, when I met with Mr. Roden and told him that the ordinance was outdated. It was 1978. And what he did, in 2008, there was a section in there for low-income people. They had a threshold, okay? He took that section completely out without the permission of the council or anybody else. And to me, that's, you know, something to look at in a future lawsuit as far as I'm concerned, you know? So I would revisit that, and I don't think we need to increase this year and for the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council. What's the pleasure of the council? Councilmember O'Neil?
I'll just make a motion, move to adopt the proposed resolution of the City Council of the City of Pacifica accepting the report of sewer service charges for fiscal year 14-15 and directing the filing of charges for collection by the county controller. and directing the filing of charges for collection by the county controller.
Mayor Protem?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? I just want to say that I've been hearing this for a long time, both the issue of how we judge the rates, you know, kind of that split billing issue and how it's been difficult to tell, and also the billing process. And I really, really, really want to see both of them cleared up in this next year. Hopefully, we can make that happen. Right? Okay. So please vote. And that passes four to nothing with one absence. So now that brings us to oral communications.
Council Communications.
Who would like to go first? I mean, not council communications, I should say, and then oral communications. So who would like to go first? Mayor Protem?
I attended the emergency preparedness meeting where we had an excellent presentation on the budget by our city manager. And it was, I think, very important that these commissions that do so much for our city and are involved in many important decisions understand as well the situation that the City of Pacifica is facing with our budgetary needs. And it was a very well-received discussion, and it was very much appreciated that they were able to hear in such detail and with such clarity what our financial situation in Pacifica is looking at these days. So I think everybody appreciated that they received that presentation. I also was part of a beautification subcommittee meeting, and this was a meeting concerning the mayor's beautification or Pacifica pride. And I'm sure this was spearheaded by Mayor Nyheart, and so I'm sure she'll tell you a little about it. But it's a very exciting new program that the Beautification Advisory Committee is sponsoring, and I'm really looking forward to being part of that. And I'd also like to congratulate Pacifica America Little League for their historical accomplishment on being Northern California Champions. And they're going to San Bernardino, and they may potentially be in the Little League All-Stars. And that is so exciting, and I am so proud of them, and I know how hard they worked. And just, they're the pride of Pacifica right now, and I just really want to say congratulations to all of them. It's just a very exciting time, and they've worked very hard. So way to go, guys. And then I also attended a library liaison committee meeting, and we were able to meet the new library manager, Julie Finkberg, I think is her name, a very wonderful person. And she's going to be taking over for the previous manager, Tom Ball, who was an incredible manager. And we have to say goodbye to him as he's leaving to Melbury, but I think we're in great hands, and we wish Tom all the best. And that's about it.
Councilwoman, agree?
Well, yeah, a couple of comments about what you just said, Mayor Protem. I was very happy to see action on the Portola statue. Really pleased to see that. And the Little League, that's really quite unique, what they're doing. And the game is on Friday. They were getting a rental van today and going down early, so they're very excited. Attend a subcommittee, I like to attend subcommittees. And the Airport Noise Commission had a subcommittee meeting because Palo Alto has asked to join the Airport Noise Commission. And Pacifica was one of the original nine, and we did extend, allowing other cities to come in, but Palo Alto, as you realize, is not in our county. So I was very concerned and protective because I don't want to see our voice diluted. So I spoke up to that effect. And the subcommittee has chosen not to endorse inviting them with open arms, but to allow them to attend meetings because we do want to know, because they have an airport. We do want a know, and we want them to be in the know of what's going on. But I would say from my point of view, we're protecting our own voice so it's not diluted. So we're being as compassionate as possible without giving up our powers. Just want to go on record that, you know, sea level rising is a big issue, and I want to see more talk about it here in Pacifica. Also regarding, there is a World Congress coming up in September in Detroit. Somebody say, why would anything be going on in Detroit? I thought the same way and looked on it online, and I was very impressed with what they've done in that part of the city. It's about, it's a World Congress on Intelligent Traffic and Traffic Congestion Management. And I like to think, I haven't found out yet, that the state of California will have a representative there because these types of things have been discussed and put into action, and it's a growing thing. And I noticed by reading one of the documents from the Transportation Authority in Sacramento that they are really getting excited about this sort of thing. So I hope that we do have a California delegate there. I would also, I think I mentioned this once before, I would like to see the city recognize the Eagle Scouts. And I don't know if the girls have something, I don't want to discriminate against the girls. But every year, they have recognition for their Eagle Scouts. And if you know anything about Eagle Scouts, it's really humongous to get that badge. So if we could look at that and have some sort of a ceremony for that? Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neil? You didn't have your light on, but I didn't know.
Yeah, I did have it on. I was just going to say, it's the Girl Scouts, I think it's the Diamond Award, is the equivalent to their eagle. So I took, I attended a LAFCO meeting, which is a local agency formation committee. And it was really rather interesting because we looked at the grand jury report for the Harbor District. And it was, when you read that, it was really quite interesting that the grand jury actually came out and said it's dysfunctional, it should just be abolished. So they really didn't mince any words. So that was kind of interesting. I also had the honor of being invited to a birthday party on Saturday for Al Hale, who I think a lot of people in Pacifica know Al. It was his 77th birthday, and he had a reunion of my son's Boy Scout troop. And there was about, he's responsible for over 40 Eagle Scouts, and there was about 15 of them there came back to say hi to Al. So that was at the American Legion Hall, you had maybe 75, 80 people there, I guess one for each year. And it was a real nice affair. So that's, that's it. And I actually met, I got an email from a brand-new citizen in Pacifica, he just moved here and he wanted to talk to a city council person. So I went and had coffee with him, so that was kind of fun.
Well, there was a whole bunch of little things, but probably the biggest ones that I want to make sure you all know about. First off, just so people are aware, CCAG does, City and County Association of Governments, does the noise sort of assessment and the development plan around airports. And the one for Half Moon Bay is on our agenda upcoming. And there's been quite a bit of discussion back and forth about development and airport noise, et cetera. So if you're interested in that, that happens to be our public hearing next Thursday night. And along that same line, I've been in a number of discussions with David Pine, and David Pine, Supervisor Pine and Supervisor Horsley had actually talked with me. We were thinking about doing a sea level rise forum here in Pacifica, but they kind of wanted to hold off until after the election was over. But in the meantime, there was, because of the meetings that have been happening, I've been working on that kind of in the background, and, you know, there's a good, strong potential that CCAG will become that body that actually brings the county together to work together. But David Pine's looking at it, and some of you may have seen the announcement for, or the request for committee members to kind of discuss that. But both Sandy Wong, the exec of CCAG, and myself have been meeting on that particular issue. Along that, partly because I think we have some real knowledge here about the whole issue of erosion and sea level rise and things related that the rest of the county is finally kind of paying attention to. A-BAG, I wanted to tell you about the Association of Bay Area Governments. We approved the application for priority conservation areas. For those of you that don't know, priority conservation areas is the, is the open space counterpart to priority development areas, or PDAs, which have been so controversial with transit, transit-oriented housing. And our, our transportation dollars come back to us based on, in part, whether or not you have a PDA. And so 70% of the dollars go to the 11 cities that actually have one of those. Well, there's an equal part, and the rest of us compete for the 30%. There's an equal kind of concern about priority conservation areas. And for some of us that have more open space like Pacifica, it's really important to have some connection there. And it looked like in the new guidelines that urban greening, which I certainly support, was going to be part of the sort of criteria. And that would mean those same cities that have already PDAs would be competing for what most of us with a lot of open space don't have. Big discussion, big argument, lots of, but we finally got it, so they will prioritize cities and areas that do not have a priority development agent, area for the PCA grants. And so what I have brought back for our city manager and for our director of planning is the materials to move forward on that designation for the Pedro Point Headlands. And the reason for that designation, if we got it, would be a whole slew of funding sources that potentially open up for things like the trail and other kinds of stuff in the future. So I just wanted to share that with you. And that was probably the biggest single thing that we did at A-BAG that was so important. Tomorrow night is the Mental Health Forum. That is, it's a forum for our services in the county, and we've got most of the county agencies represented. We're going to have that at the Community Center from 5:30 to 7:30, and I really hope the public attends because it's sort of one of our ways of showing the county how interested we are in getting more services over the hill. Both Chief Tassa and myself have been working on this issue with the county for the last few months. And it is absolutely critical that citizens know what's available and utilize what's available because quite often it stays in that area around sort of Redwood City, San Mateo-ish, and some of the services are, we're kind of pushing that envelope, and we're trying to get more over here. So I hope you join us tomorrow night. And in that vein, the last thing I wanted to say was I'd actually been asked to congratulate the Little League, but I will forego that since it was already talked about. But I do want to make one request. They asked me to be at the event tomorrow night for them, and I can't since I'm hosting the forum, and it's the exact same time. It's 5:30 to 7:30. So they, it's a Little League send-off, and I would hope that one of you, ah, there you go. Michael, are you volunteering?
No, because my daughter's coach for Boys and Girls Club basketball team, and they're doing their playoff game tomorrow, and she's the coach.
I want somebody to go. I want one of you to come with me, but I want somebody to go.
I would love to be at both, but I escaped camp. They locked camp up, and I got out to be here tonight, so I don't think I'm-
Okay, you can't do any of the above, all right.
I'm going, I'm going to be on a plane-
Oh, listen to them.
... tomorrow morning for my three-day vacation in Catalina.
Well, okay, then you are all obligated to write your congratulations and condolences and I'm sorries to the Little League because none of us can be there.
We have one more.
Lori? Oh, yeah, maybe Len could go. Well, we hope he feels better. Okay.
I am happy to try to attend whatever you'd like me to, Mayor. I already have the Mental Health Forum.
Because that's a really big deal, the Little League, and I'd like to be there, but it's the exact same time. They are very excited.
Share with me the details, we'll make it happen.
We will, we will share tomorrow, and you can go make an appearance and come back. All right.
Is it seven?
5:30 to 7:30.
Same time as my-
Same time, everything's at the same time. All right. So thank you. Now that you've got all our schedules for tomorrow evening, we'll come back. Anything else? Okay. We'll come back into oral communications. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on anything that's not on the agenda. And I want to remind you that in the agenda, there's quite a series of bolded statements that I'm really kind of working on making sure we talk about ideas and that it says very clearly in your rules. And I promised that I would start reading this, so I just have to get it out here. Any person wishing to address the council, she'll be recognized by the mayor, and you've got three minutes and all that, the maximum time. Any person making impertinent slanderous or profane remarks who becomes boisterous while addressing the council shall be called to order by the presiding officer. The council, you are to make your comments to the council as a whole, not any one single council member. And if the out-of-order continues, that you may be removed and you may be barred from future meetings. So I just want to remind everybody of that because we're all about civility these days. Okay. So with that said, I have several cards, and I usually read off, I think we've got some new people for oral communications tonight who have never done this. When I read your name, come to the podium. There will be a set of lights up there. The green light says go. It goes for two minutes. Then there's a yellow light. That means don't stop, you've just got another minute. And when that goes to red, then you need to stop. So I just didn't want the lights to fool anybody that has, is new to up here. Now, I'm going to butcher this name, and I apologize profusely, but it's Gail Mazacelli?
Gail Mazacelli.
Okay. Gail Mazacelli, and then William Bohm, okay, followed by Roger Medler.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Gail Mazacelli. I live at 1581 Beach Boulevard, and I am a renter in that small apartment building. I'm here tonight to talk about the ongoing problems in the vacant lot, which is 1567 Beach. It's the very last part of Beach Boulevard. I brought these problems that I'm going to mention to the attention of the code enforcement part of the Planning Department on May 29. There are three ongoing problems. They include the use of the lot as an illegal parking lot, day and overnight parking, its use as an illegal dog park for the northern part of our town, and three, its use as an illegal dump site. Regarding parking, in late June, I called the Pacifica Police Department because there was an unresponsive male in an old pickup truck. There were three other cars parked there, which is typical. But there are a lot of cars in and out all day in the lot area. I left for a doctor's appointment, came back an hour and a half later. The other cars were gone. This car, the driver's side door was open, his feet were protruding, he was unresponsive. When I called the police department, I was told to approach him before they would call out the paramedics. I was apprehensive, but I did so. The guy was either inebriated or wasted. When I told him the police department was on its way, he jumped up, got behind the wheel and left. I notified my landlord that evening and was told that he was familiar with that guy being out there. The guy is illegally parked, as is everyone in the lot. On July-
You've got a minute.
Okay.
Close everybody.
Okay. 12:20 a.m. on July 10th, a van was there all day and evening. They turned on the generator at 10 minutes after midnight, waking up all the neighbors. My landlord, who lives above us, called the police department on that case. The dog, the dog park, people let their dogs run loose. It includes pit bulls. Neighbors have been challenged, along with me being challenged, by dogs running at us. It's also used at a dump. On May 29th, we had a sofa, golf clubs, a suitcase out there. I went down to the Planning Department, filled out the written complaint form, and they came out the next day and, a few days later, and picked up the material. Other times, we've had a toilet out there.
Oh, my.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're asking, I know I'm over on my time, but we're asking that something-
I think I get what you're asking for. Thank you, absolutely. And Chief, I think that one falls to you. William Bohm.
Yes, I want to continue with what Gail has said, is basically, I live in the same com- complex. Not only what she was complaining about and what we all complained about, there has been drug use out there, loud music, all kinds of activity that should not be out there in that vacant lot. To get to that vacant lot is city property. So even if we put, even if we had the landlord, the owner of the property put up a chain link fence, the problem would not go away because everybody would park outside, and it would go, it would be continuing on. The city put up no parking signs all along the breakwater there, they're now gone. So therefore, and even if when they're up, nobody basically heed to it. So, you know, we're basically tired, tired of reporting to City Hall, calling the police all the time. There's something to be done to block that access so the cars cannot go into that area. And so the only people that we would like to see out there is walkers, bicyclists, you know, dog-friendly people who are respected about not having their dogs crap everywhere. So the thing is, is that this lot has been ongoing, and it's always been a problem. Even last night, there was cars there at 11 o'clock at night. What are they doing there? I mean, what's going on? I can understand going out there and enjoying the ocean and the sunset and everything else, but, but a lot of times, there's a lot of illegal activity going on. And like Gail said, there was a camper out there, started up the generator. There was one night, there was a car parked all the way at the end, and when we went out there, this was about midnight, all of a sudden, lights came on and they sped away super fast. You know, there must be something illegal going on with that area. And so we would just like to see that area cleaned up, have cars not going to that area. There is plenty of places to park all along that beach walkway. And I think with the help of the city, we can, we can come up with some solution to basically keep the cars out of that, out of that area.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, Roger Medler, Tree Stier, and Tess Hunt. And that's all the cards I have.
Yeah, how dare you talk about my friends that way? Just kidding. Anyway, I'm glad to see that your PCT has, has you on, City Council on YouTube for communications. So we've had two meetings at Lacy School, and we've had one here, and we never did finish the one here. So I don't know what you call communication. We, I think we're in a role of no communication, and we are on communication. So what happened? I don't know. Where's the communication? We talk to you, I talk to you, and you don't seem to understand anything I say. I write you four letters about the same thing, you still, wow, it took four letters to get to this far? Anyway. So I sent all of you a package, the City Council members a package on explaining my actions, and I have no, gotten no response, no phone call. What kind, is that communication? How about some communication? I mean, how many times do we have to say this? You know, I mean, you are the people we're supposed to be looking up to. Let's talk, you know? And then I tried to get a meeting with Lori Tenfor, she didn't want to communicate. She's done communicating. So, oh, really? Okay, that's how we communicate around here. So we get runaround letters, and so we tried to schedule a meeting. It took three months, okay? And then the business is legal because it has a business license. That's a, that's a bunch of BS. When you, anyway, according to your email, Lori, you don't want to communicate at all with me. And you just respond, there's no, you just refuse. No sense of having a meeting if you're not going to answer the questions because we went and had a meeting. They scheduled a meeting at the City Hall, and then they said, eh, we're not going to let you talk. Oh, really? You've got 40,000 people in Pacifica, and look how many people's here. Hey, doesn't that tell you something? You know, kind of like, hey, you know, you got to talk to us, you got to communicate. So I'm starting to think that people are afraid to come here. I would think so. So don't be afraid. We'll have Teresa Dreyer, she can walk you to your car. I hope you, you know, come in and join the community and help improve the community. That's what I'm actually here for. Eventually, you're going to find out that I'm a halfway decent guy. I'm not the guy you think I am. And I'd like to get Teresa Dreyer on the City Council if we possibly can, get rid of some of you people that aren't doing too much at all. And we need to get somebody here who'll do some good. So I hope they vote you out. So have a good evening.
Thank you. Tree Stier and Tess Hunt.
Well, that's a hard act to follow. But I have to agree with Roger on some of the aspects because since March 24, I've given the whole City Council a copy of the Pollan versus Brook trails regarding the unilateral sewers, and also discussed it with the city manager, and wanted the opinion from our city attorney, who was representing Pacifica, and to try to avoid lawsuits. I think you ought to contact her. But anyway, it specifically says, and I don't want to just point out individuals, but it is in the previous minutes, a couple of weeks ago, where one of the council persons here was aware of this problem, even questioned it. And I'm going to repeat it again. The money that we got from the lawsuit, from the Water Regional Board to put in unilateral sewers, from what I understand now, talking to David Graham, the portion from Lindemar to Adobe, those were put in totally free. So if you're going to do your sewer and it costs you $5,000, those people got a $5,000 break. Well, then there was $50,000 where volunteers could apply for the $1,000 each. Well, that was eaten up. Well, now, since July 2, there's another $50,000. And I was amazed when it stated that it came from a grant. Well, actually, it didn't come from a grant. It came from our own enterprise fund, which is our own property taxes, you know? So I find it a little strange, and I think you really ought to settle this dispute because you're discriminating against the residents of Pacifica. When it comes to fees, whether it's electric, water, or anything else, every individual has to be treated equally, okay? Now, the other thing I want to bring up, and I brought out of my archives, was city facing 1.1 million budget deficit. This was May 2nd, 2007. And you cannot transfer funds from the enterprise fund into a general fund and use it for pensions or any other way because it specifically says here, by the Big Horn Decision. And I mean, if you people don't know this, I mean, I have a copy that I can Xerox to you, but this is serious business, okay? Now, there's another thing I'd like to bring up, got a few minutes. We're worrying about disbursements and where the money goes, and you can't understand it, and that's why we're $4 million deficit, because nobody understands the budget. In 2007, you adopted a resolution for capital asset administrative policy, and it specifically says through here, your policies, it's just too many pages for me to read, but I would suggest you get a copy of it. Thank you.
Tess Hunt, and that's the last card I have.
I'm a little nervous. I haven't done any.
Yeah, I know. And I'm going to ask you to get right up into that mic, or we can't hear you.
Okay. I'm Tess Hunt. I'm a Pacifica resident for 14 years, five years of which have been on Clarendon Road and Palmetto right over here. I contacted the mayor about four years ago, as well as the city engineer, about installing a crosswalk down at that intersection. It's a three-way intersection. At that time, back then, I was told that there was no reason to have a crosswalk there, that there wasn't enough traffic to have a crosswalk, and also that they had done a count, although I wasn't told when they did a count or how it was actually performed. I think we're all aware of that location. It's the northern end of Maury Point Access, Beach Access. There's a sign at the freeway that says, go to the beach this way. So the closest crosswalks to that corner is the one that's right here, which is about two blocks that way. And then there's a crosswalk over by 711. The engineer told me back then that they did not put crosswalks in, that did not have a signal or a stop sign, which is not really true, or there have been exceptions in Pacifica. The one that's over by 711, one over by Eureka, you can look around, there's lots of crosswalks with no stop signs or anything. We're all aware that the foot traffic that crosses there is everything from pedestrians to seniors on mobility scooters. There have been people on horseback there. There are ocean cleanup crews that go there. There's families, there's children. And in order to get down there, they have to kind of take life into their own hands. It's a blind spot. It's also a curve that's very, very fast, the speed limit. There is no speed limit that's really close to that intersection. So traffic has really increased early in the morning, after work, traffic rush hours, weekends. I don't have to tell you how great it is to go to the beach on a sunny day. There's a lot of activity there, and people are taking a lot of chances crossing there. I would like to know, what is the process? I am one person, I hung a flyer up that said, contact the mayor and sign an online petition. I work three jobs, seven days a week, with one flyer just taped up there. In the course of about six weeks, there have been 85 signatures.
I'm going to have to ask you to stop, but thank you.
Would you like a copy of the flyer so you can see?
Sure. You can leave it over on the end. In the meantime, just, we don't talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but just as a couple of points of information, one is, I, for the council, have spoken with our city manager about the concerns at Clarendon and Palmetto, and that process has already started. So thank you for bringing it forward. Since I live in the neighborhood, she's not hearing me. She asked a good question, but anyway, that process is already started. So I wanted the rest of the council to know that, as well as our speaker, because that was brought forward, and it's been a dangerous area for a number of years. So, good point. And traffic has sped up. Okay. And with that, we have one more item under, could that finishes up oral communication? No other cards? Okay. If you just hang out for a minute, we'll be over shortly. One item for consideration, designation of a voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference staff report. I assume this is city clerk?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, council members, the staff report is simply to designate a voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. That person would be voting at the business meeting on Friday, September 5. Sorry. Voting on the resolutions that were, league resolutions that were included in your packet. So I think to date, Councilmember O'Neil has signed up to go to the conference.
And nobody else is going?
I might just go up for one day, but it'd be just to.
Go up?
For the League of Cali, for in Sacramento.
It's September 33.
It's down south. I don't know how you're going to go for one day.
Never mind. I was thinking it was in Sacramento.
It's a waste of time.
Yeah, really? So Councilmember O'Neil, you're going to attend? I love it. Then, do I have a motion? Or does anybody want to speak on this issue? I have no cards. Okay, seeing no one? What's the pleasure? Councilmember, or Mayor Protem?
I make a motion that Mike O'Neil serves as our voting delegate for the League of California Cities Conference.
And Councilwoman?
Second.
Okay. I think that was kind of easy. All, please vote. And that passes four to nothing with one person absent. Thank you all very, very much, and good night. And go, go, what are the Little League team, what's their name?
The Pacifica American Little League.
Yeah, but the team. Well, anyway, go. Go Pacifica.